July 17th, meeting of the East Hemphill Township Board of Supervisors. Tonight's meeting has been advertised to be held in person and online using Zoom, with login and call-in information posted on our website. The meeting will be conducted by the chairman, who will be assisted by an employee managing the Zoom site. Tonight's video and audio is being recorded, and Robert's rules of order apply. To offer comment, you must be recognized by the chairman. For people utilizing Zoom, please use the chat function to be recognized. Text your name and address to the moderator. Your request to speak will then be passed on to the staff to the chairman to be recognized. Once recognized by the chairman, unmute your microphone. After speaking, please mute your microphone. East Hemphill Township Public Comment Rules will apply for all public comment. You must be a resident or business owner in the township to speak. You must identify yourself by name and address before speaking, and sign the guest log for meeting-minute purposes, or follow the chat procedure already discussed for Zoom attendance. Comment is limited to three minutes. It must be about the agenda item being discussed, with the exception of public comment when non-agenda items can be addressed. No action will be taken on any non-agenda item of a non-emergency nature during the public comment period for non-agenda items. We will now move on to our first agenda item. Please join me for a moment of silence and a pledge of allegiance. The pledge?
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay. Thank you and good evening, everyone. First item, or the second item on our agenda tonight, is a police citizen award. That'll be handled by the chief.
From Mannheim Township EMS. We're here today for a citizens' lifesaving award to recognize five individuals that jumped into action on May 21st of this year. Four employees of Mercedes got word that one of their fellow coworkers had gone into cardiac arrest. Ted Fleck, excuse me, Chad Staub, Brandon Reed, and Bill McGoldrick. They immediately began CPR and obtained an onsite AED and attached and administered the AED. Across the street, Kim McDade from Wade's Towing was notified via a phone app of a medical incident at Mercedes. She ran over to see if she could be of any assistance as well. These five people rendered quick, immediate first aid that led to a successful outcome of a cardiac arrest for when responders got there. Officer Stephen Armstrong was the first emergency responder, followed by Mannheim Township EMS. Officer Armstrong provided chest compressions and gave Kim McDade a break from the compressions that she was getting when he arrived. And he continued to give chest compressions until EMS got on scene. When the patient left the premise of Mercedes, he was breathing and alert. He's here tonight. This was the first time that he's met some of the first responders that gave him aid, as well as Kim McDade. Obviously, he knows his fellow coworkers, and I'm sure they've communicated and thanked for the efforts. So at this point, I'd like to call up the four. There's four of the five are here tonight. So if Chad, Brandon, Bill, and Kim, if you could all step forward. Both East Hemphill Township, as well as Mannheim Township EMS and LGH, thanks for general, all have a token of appreciation. Mike, do you want to come up here as well? So Mike's the gentleman that called. Yeah, these people were able to save his life. So again, tonight's the first night that he's met Kim, as well as Officer Armstrong and the EMS personnel from Mannheim Township. You know, a lot of us respond to these type of calls, and these kind of outcomes are rare. The survival rate of cardiac arrest is 12% if you're outside of hospital care. So the fact that the quick response that these individuals all gave absolutely positively led to the outcome of Mike's recovery, so. I know that Mannheim Township has some certificates for their people that they're gonna, we're gonna give outside here. But, so, thank you all very much.
We're gonna stand up behind, right where we stand. You guys, come across the front. Before we break up on this, I'd just like to say that we are indeed blessed in this township and in this county to have a great group of professional EMS and police officers serving our community. You guys do a fantastic job, and we are greatly appreciative of all the work that you do. Thank you. And with that, we're moving into our business portion of the meeting. And if you guys would like to scoot, we certainly understand that.
We got Fred. Fred remains.
The Rock. Okay. Our next agenda item up for consideration this evening is our consent agenda. The consent agenda addresses the approval of routine and repetitive business matters that tend to need little or no review, discussion, or deliberation. Consent agenda items are provided to all board members for review in advance of the meeting. Is there any comment on the consent agenda from the board?
Mr. Chairman, I understand from the last meeting, and I apologize, I did not get to listen to the tape. And I would just ask that we pull out item F and just table that until our next meeting. I'd like for my own self, just to try to listen to the tape and refresh my memory on what actually was said, and go over the minutes a little more thorough.
Any comment or objection from anyone on the board?
No, no objection. I agree with that. There was some things that I had noticed, too, that could use some clarification. So I agree with a delay in approving the minutes.
Okay.
Mr. Chairman, before you ask for the motion, if you could point, yeah, give your attention to the chief's report for this month. I wanted to show you, it was pointed out to me, and rightly so. On page six, there's the speed enforcement detail summary. And if you compare that to the page nine, which actually gives you a running total, you'll see that in June, there were substantial numbers of citations and warnings issued. This was due in part because the force was at full staff. You had full platoons throughout June, which allowed them to pull people off patrol to do some of that traffic work.
Awesome.
Thank you.
Okay. All right, any other comment on the consent agenda from the board? Hearing none, anything from the audience? And hearing none there? All right, it looks like we'll have three pieces of the consent agenda approval. I'll hear a motion to approve the consent agenda items A through E as presented.
So moved.
Motion from Mr. Russell, do I hear a second?
Second.
Second from Mr. Brubaker. Motion from Mr. Russell, second from Mr. Brubaker. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Motion passes five-zero. Next motion will be to approve the consent agenda G and H invoices as presented.
I will be abstaining from this.
Okay. Do I hear a motion?
So moved.
Motion from Mr. Wigglesworth, do I hear a second?
Second.
Second from Mr. Johnson. Motion from Mr. Wigglesworth, second from Mr. Johnson. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Abstain.
Motion passes four-zero with one abstention. And then finally, I'll hear a motion to approve consent agenda, I'm sorry. I'll hear a motion to table consent agenda item F, having to do with proposed changes to the record. Do I hear a motion?
So moved.
Motion from Mr. Wigglesworth, do I hear a second?
Second.
Second from Mr. Johnson. A motion from Mr. Wigglesworth, second from Mr. Johnson. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Motion passes four-zero, five-zero, I'm sorry. All right. Next up, we have action items. First action item this evening is Leeser Lumber, a request to waive preliminary plan submission. Do we have someone here from Leeser Lumber?
Leser.
Leser, I'm sorry.
I don't believe we do. Nate is on mute, if he's ready to speak if you need something.
Whether they're coming or not?
They were informed that they were on this agenda. It is a sketch fund, and they're asking for a preliminary plan waiver, so we can quickly go through that if you'd like, or they can come back again later.
We can pull up the print if you'd like to see it.
It is really minor. Yeah. If we want, we just let Nate kind of brief us on it.
Okay. Nate, can you brief us on it? We'd like to move this along if we can.
Yep. Leser Lumber bought a residential property just to the west of their main site, and they are, with this plan, they are going to add that lot to their existing lot and add parking on the residential lot and add a 3,000-square-foot building addition to the building directly beside that.
This is a pretty basic plan, and it would all be constructed in one construction phase.
Yes. They needed a fair amount of variances and special exceptions to make this work, but the zoning hearing, or yes, the zoning hearing board approved it all, I believe, back in March.
Okay.
It's almost a stormwater plan at this point.
The only thing that is making it a final plan is the 3,000-square-foot building addition, and they're on the fence about doing that.
Well, the waiver of preliminary plan is a fairly routine situation that we grant. Now that I think we understand the project a little better, I, for one, would consider moving forward.
Local business, since it's a rather minor land development application.
Mr. Russell, can you please pull your microphone up?
Anything else on the board?
I would just say that, really, the preliminary plan is most important when we have phased projects, and this is not. Not that.
Great. Okay, thank you. Any questions from the audience? You have to come up here, sir.
My name is Jerry Place. I live at 1352 Jasmine Lane, East Hemphill. I have absolutely nothing to do with this. Only one request I would have is that when they build a 3,000-square-foot structure, make sure it can accommodate solar panels, so they're not taking up yardage someplace else, if that should be the case in the future.
Thank you for your comment. Sure.
Patty Clark, 3337 Cochran Drive. Just maybe a general comment about setting a precedent for businesses if they are requesting waivers or any kind of exception, that you're kind of setting a precedent of them not needing to be present at the meeting. I don't know how common this is, that the company doesn't attend, but you're kind of setting yourself up for that precedent, and then in the future, you know, other companies may not be as interested, but, you know, that concerned about attending a meeting to represent themselves. So that's my comment.
You make a good point. Anything else from the audience? Okay. Again, I feel we know enough about this project. It's come before zoning hearing board, as well as staff. We've got a good understanding, so I'd like to move forward. And I'll hear a motion to approve a preliminary plan waiver request for Leeser Lumber project, subject to all staff and engineering comments.
So moved.
Motion from Mr. Russell, do I hear a second?
Second.
Second from Mr. Wigglesworth. Motion from Mr. Russell, a second from Mr. Wigglesworth. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Motion passes five to zero. Next on the agenda is some discussion, primarily just discussion about school resource officer program expansion at Hemphill High School and Junior High, by adding an additional officer. And with that, we'll go to the chief.
Sure. We applied for and obtained a grant through the PCCD, Pennsylvania Coalition of Crime and Delinquency, to cover our percentage cost of a second SRO in the Hemphill School District. The school district has the funding for it, and we have secured, again, for the first two years, salary benefits. And at this point, both sides like to move forward with this, with anticipation of having the officer start in January. So in order to do so, I will need to take somebody from patrol and move them into that role and fill a vacant patrol position.
And did you mention that there's some grant money involved with this?
Yes, I've received the grant to fully fund our percentage for the first two years.
Nice grant on this project for two years. Okay.
And the spread right now is 70-30.
70-30, correct.
So 70% school district, 30% East Hemphill.
Correct.
And it has the potential of becoming 75-25.
Has that potential. We've been having that discussion for after the two years.
And it was initiated by the school board.
Sorry, what's that?
It was initiated with effort from the school board.
Correct.
And do the other townships get involved? Or is it just because the schools are in East Hemphill?
We've decided that schools are in East Hemphill. Both the two middle schools that we're looking to expand into are in East Hemphill, as well as the officer is ours during the summer to use for things like what was accomplished in the month of June, the speed enforcement, as well as filling in for patrol shifts with vacations.
You do bring up a great point, and that is, it's a rub that we've got to figure out. And when the chief had mentioned that the discussion's on the table to change from 70 to 30, from 70-30 split to 75-25 after two years. That's the logic behind it, what you're saying. Just the catch-22 that we're in, the schools are in our area. But I hear you on the other municipalities. It's gonna end a little, so.
I used to feel that way, but realistically, about 75% of the school kids are in our township. Between the two middle schools, the high school, LIC, LPC, which are two large elementary schools themselves, we have the bulk of all the students. And we didn't have an SRO. Every time there's an incident, our police are responding to it anyways, just like any other business. So the fact that the school district is contributing a significant part of the cost, and we are in a situation post-COVID where we are having an increased number of incidents at the school, and this is really a preventive strategy to prevent school issues from escalating to a violent situation. So SROs are very much a preventative measure that prevents violence. They're not there to respond to it, but to help prevent it.
And then, as part of the Pennsylvania budget that was just approved, I think I read somewhere, but I couldn't find it today when I looked for it, that is there like $50,000 per school that's given for this purpose? Does anyone know what I'm talking about, or?
I don't know necessarily specifically what you're referring to. There was a dollar value for the grant that we applied for, but it was, the funds were way more than 50. So I'm not real sure what that is.
It was, I'm sorry. It wasn't this grand. It was like part of the new budget that just got approved last week that I thought, actually, when I first saw this on the agenda, I thought it was in reference to that, but I guess it's a separate thing. And that would be good news if it happens, I think, you know, because although that may be the 50,000 that goes to the school portion.
I'll look into that, so thank you.
All right. Yep. Hopefully, I didn't just make that up, but, yeah, I believe that's the case.
Okay, well, with that, I would say we need to vote on adding an officer, right?
You're expanding your force by one.
Yeah, we're adding an additional officer to our force. And again, I agree with all the points that were made. I'd also say that I think that it's certainly good to have one law enforcement organization involved with all the schools in our jurisdiction, without any potential oversight from other places. So with that, I'll hear a motion to authorize Chief Brubaker to hire an additional officer and expand the SRO memorandum of understanding for the second SRO. Do I hear a motion?
So moved.
Motion from Mr. Brubaker, do I hear a second?
I'll second that with the addition of moving forward to hire an officer.
Okay. Motion from Mr. Brubaker, a second from Mr. Russell. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Motion passes five-zero. Next up, we have a traffic signal easement agreement for Harrisburg Pike and Good Drive to accommodate the Blue-Green Corridor trail improvements.
The, this is part of the Blue-Green Corridor project, and Harrisburg Pike at Good Drive, that intersection, we needed two small easements obtained off of Mennonite Home, and that's what this easement does. It provides for the crosswalks that are going in and the landing pads. As you can see in the print, it's one in one corner and one at the other corner. There just wasn't enough right-of-way to work within.
Is all the rest of our signal hardware inside the right-of-way? Or were we just having some signal equipment outside the right-of-way?
You mean in connection with this?
Well, I'm just saying, I'm not critical. I'm just a little surprised that we had to gain these easements. I mean, was there a situation where we have an old signal pole that's outside the right-of-way? No easement, and then they realized they were doing some improvements, and we got to come back, and we got to correct.
We had exactly the same thing at Harrisburg and Hemlock as well.
Yeah, so we're just correcting an old plan in many ways with bringing easements in.
Yes.
Okay. We're not adding new signal poles or any other new type of equipment.
No, this is just for the crossings, for the trail.
Okay.
Any other questions from the board? Any questions from the audience? Hearing none. I'll hear a motion to authorize signature on the traffic signal easement and maintenance agreement between the Little Conestoga Creek Foundation, the Mennonite Home, and East Hemphill Township.
So moved.
Motion from Mr. Russell, do I hear a second? Second from Mr. Bennett. Motion from Mr. Russell, second from Mr. Bennett. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Motion passes five-zero. All right, looks like we've got a honey run special event coming up on August 24th. This is Garber.
Correct. Hemphill Rec Center has submitted a request to use township roadways for their annual honey run event. This is occurring on August 24th. The 5K run is at 8:00. Utilizes township roadways as it has in the past. And it is staff's recommendation that you approve the special event application for the honey run event to be held on August 24th, 2024, on multiple roadways across the township, with final costs determined and invoiced after the event is complete, as well as permitting the chairman to sign the indemnification agreement for the use and closure of township roadways.
Okay. Any additional questions from the board?
Pre-routine.
Yep. Hearing none, anything from the audience? All right, also hearing none. I'll hear a motion to approve the honey run special event use of roadways Church Bowman and Nissley on August 24th, 2024, from 6:30 a.m. to 10:30 a.m., and authorize the chairman to sign the indemnification agreement for the use of those roadways. Do I hear a motion?
So moved.
Motion from Mr. Wigglesworth, do I hear a second?
Second.
I'll take Mr. Brubaker. Motion from Mr. Wigglesworth, a second from Mr. Brubaker. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Motion passes five-zero. All right. As we move into old business, our recreation plan. Did we have any discussion this evening on our recreation plan that's going to be adopted? Probably at our August 7th meeting. We've all had this planned for quite some time now. It lays out our park and recreation facilities. I think in an awesome, awesome manner. We've got a lot of good things going on in the park and recreation space, and it'll be nice having this to sort of guide us along. Anything else from the board?
No.
Okay.
At this point, at this point.
All right, hearing none, any? Yes, sir. Good evening. Let me, we're gonna need your name and address. Okay, and, yeah, I was.
Thank you, ma'am. Hi, my name is Frank Fraser. I live at 2888 Spooky Nook Road, Mannheim, Pennsylvania. And I'm not quite sure how these meetings go, but I'm here to complain about a snow issue that takes place on Spooky Nook and Shank. So would this be the right time? Or would I have to submit some sort of a formal thing in order to get this here, to get it heard, and hopefully, you know, positive reaction?
We're gonna, if you don't mind, we'd like to ask you to wait just a few minutes till we get beyond this and get to the public comment area of our meeting. At the public comment period, we'll give you all the time you need.
I'd be more than happy to, sir.
Okay, Frank.
Thank you so much.
You bet.
I'll let you go ahead and just hold on to that.
Yes, ma'am.
Okay.
Just part of a quick.
Yeah. Okay, so on the recreation plan, any discussion?
I like the, I like the maps we got of our parks. Does, I think that's actually gonna be something that people can use to see what we got in the township.
All right. Anything from the audience? Okay. Moving on, we'll move to uh, new business, uh, pickleball expansion. Uh, we'll begin with Mrs. Schweitzer.
So Diane and I had a meeting with uh, some of the representatives that represent the Hemfield Pickleball Club. And they had expressed interest in uh, expanding the pickleball courts from four to six to see if the board would be interested in entertaining that idea. So um, we have a print um, to show you that they provided to us. Mr. Clays is here if there's any questions representing the group. And um, it's gonna involve some costs. We need to expand the paving by twenty feet, which will be closer to the trail and through the house that currently exists. The cost probably is about twenty thousand dollars, which would include um, stone, um, topsoil. Public Works would do the excavation work, the paving, and then the color coating on top and the nets and poles. And you'd be gaining three more courts, which would be basically at the bottom half of that sketch. And they'd all be facing the right direction, the correct direction, north, south, instead of the one, the fourth one is going east, west.
The, uh, agenda says from four courts to six. Is it really three to six?
No, there's four courts there now. There's three, three going north, south, and one going east, west.
Okay, so increase from four to six.
Right.
Okay, thank you.
So you'd have three new courts at the lower half in line with the courts that exist now.
And we've, we've had complaints from the new homeowners at this point.
I have not.
Good.
And I don't believe that they approached you at all, Mr. Clays.
Is it? Um, since I know the rest of the board has experienced it from this last year, is it just the one home that uh, seems to be subject to the noise or is it a few homes over there?
It's just really the one.
Just the one.
One, one property.
Past tense.
Well, yeah, there's, there's been a new owner in the, in the home. Uh, but again, I, I, on some level, I think we need to be sensitive to um, the new homeowner who has purchased a home uh, based on his surroundings. Uh, and this perhaps could create additional, additional noise. I think generally the board is in favor of additional pickleball courts. Our concern is that with the addition of courts here uh, and with the popularity of the sport, we, we see this sport growing and there probably be additional need for additional courts down, down the road. And rather than sort of a ham and egg in this, um, we believe, at least I, I believe, perhaps we should look at a more comprehensive approach to the courts in the town, in the park as well as in the community. We were, we were speaking earlier today, um, it might be a good idea instead of additional courts here, uh, it might be good to be thinking about maybe putting more than two courts somewhere else in, in, in the park uh, for additional. I, I don't know. I don't, you know, we haven't, we haven't looked at anything yet. Uh, I know we, we've also, uh, we're also gonna consider as time goes on, uh, pickleball courts at, at uh, hopefully our new, our new part, uh, new park there on uh, Knoll Road. So uh, you know, I for one, I'm generally in favor of, of expanding. It becomes a matter of how we expand and, and the cost of the expansion. Um, we wanna, and whether we do the expansion there or somewhere else. But I think, I think uh, perhaps we need a little bit more collaboration with the pickleball group uh, on this. That would be my, my thinking right now. Anyone else?
Um.
You want to say? Well, you, you go ahead. No, okay. Yeah, I was going to uh, you know, I first thought, I thought, well, this is a great idea, but then after hearing Tom's comments, I feel like, you know, if we're gonna do it once, short term, we could do this, but I think with the popularity of pickleball, I'm pretty much repeating what Tom just said. I, I feel like we could do it better if we planned more instead of uh, just adding more courts where we probably would not have put them originally if we knew what was gonna happen with pickleball.
Um, I'm, for me, I'm so for taking a more comprehensive approach. I think, um, you know, I personally would like to see more added um, as our population in East Hemfield is using the pickleball quite a bit. Uh, I think there's a need for it and I'd like to you know, for us to work with the pickleball group to come up with a, you know, I like what you said about the ham and egg. I just don't wanna have something that we, we do right now and then two years later, we're regretting that we spent the money because of settling or whatever. We're trying to add on to a court that's been there for, I don't know, how long has that court been there? Thirty, forty years? More?
The court itself?
Yeah.
Since, since the, since the park's been here, that McAdam area's been there.
So I think it's gonna be tough to, just in my limited experience in construction, it's gonna be tough to, to put on an addition there and expect there not to be, and maybe Perry can speak to this if he's on.
Sorry, took me a while to unmute there. Uh, there definitely will be a um, a joint that in the near future could move and where it would be located would be right in um, the far, the south uh, end of the courts. Uh, anytime you put blacktop together um, at a joint, it, it's more than likely gonna crack and, and you will, you will see it at some point. I guarantee you that. Um, but how long it takes, that, that's besides, you know, nobody knows. But expanding a court twenty feet like that, there is a possibility that it could settle.
Mr. Clays? Mr. Clays? Yeah, could, yeah, could I, would, would you like to comment?
Uh, my name is Jerry Clays. I live at thirteen fifty-two Jasmine Lane, East Hemfield. Uh, first of all, I am not here in official capacity.
Understood.
I'm just here as a member of the uh, uh, pickleball club. Um, and one thing I have been advised by the board is before you do any final thing, we'd like to have the chance to review the final plans and make sure it accommodates uh, what we consider are important, not only player uh, issues, but safety issues. And particularly the thing that comes to mind is the divider there, twenty-four inches. Man, I'd like to see that at four foot. I tell you, we have temporary nets that go about two feet and people are jumping over them. I can't tell you how many scraped knees and palms people get because they think they can jump over it and their foot gets caught. They end up flat on their face. Uh, so the other thing is uh, we're a little concerned about either end and we'd like to take a good close look at this, what the drop off is. If people are playing on the um, outer court, uh, the, yeah, the, the outer uh, six courts. Um, if they're running, could they run over the edge and if, if you have a significant drop off, it could lead to serious injury and wanna make sure that uh, would it be nice if we had a fence there so that, that couldn't happen? But again, that's, that's money. But as you know, uh, pickleball has grown by leaps and bounds. That, there are, I've, I've counted, there are at least fifty pickleball locations in uh, Lancaster County. I would encourage, have, have any of you had a chance to go over and look at uh, what Mannheim Township is doing? Go over and take a look at what they have done. It is first class. It's gonna open in about uh, six, eight weeks. It's over, you drive through where the uh, library is, make seventy-five percent around the circle and go back in there. It, it, they're doing a first class, gonna have lights. It's gonna have, uh, shade is another important issue. Uh, also I'd, I'd encourage you to take, have you looked at East Peteville's, East uh, Petersburg uh, pickleball courts? They've done a nice job with those. They really have. And a lot of players are electing to play over there because uh, because it is so nice. But these courts are great. Uh, and they, we'll fill them up. We'll get plenty of players. I just wanna make sure that uh, it's a safe place to say, to play. We're not gonna get anybody hurt. Um, and that uh, on that, it complies with the um, rules and regulation of pickleball. You know, I don't think, I, I don't think the intention to ha, is to have any tournaments. Like I said, this will not accommodate tournaments. Um, or at least sanctioned tournaments. We could have our own little private tournaments, but th- these courts would not accommodate sanctioned tournaments. But that'd be great for uh, for everyday play, so.
Okay. We, many of your comments sort of dovetail with our thinking, I believe, on this also in terms of safety, uh, surface, um, play, that, that, that kind of thing. And, and certainly, uh, certainly we won't do anything without incorporating the pickleball group's input.
And ju- just as an aside, we do have some money, not a lot in our budget, that we're just dying to spend on something. Uh, so uh, shade would be a nice thing. Uh, it gets hot out there, particularly this, this summer. It's been brutal out there and you need some shade. Uh, so.
Okay. We hear you.
Okay.
Thank you very much.
You guys have done a great job. I appreciate everything you've done and uh, keep up the good work.
Thanks for the input. Anything else?
Um, is, is our intention to vote on something at some point? I suppose we are. Not tonight though, right?
Well, I, I, not tonight.
No.
For sure. I think we wanted to, in coordination with the pickleball group, we wanna uh, take a look at everything we've talked about here tonight in terms of uh, expanding where we are, expanding somewhere else. You know, and, and lots of different factors in between.
I think it might be wise just to go back to the committee level and have you guys do some investigation on, on what's been done in other places. Take a look at what the actual need is, try to quantify what the need is. And get a, maybe a more um, thorough cost estimate to add to what we have now. Um, I just, you know, I would hate to spend money now and then, like you said, be in the same place two years from now when, if we take a, a comprehensive approach to it, I think that serves everybody well.
And again, and again, I think an important point that uh, Mr. Clays that, that he brought up was the distance between the courts. We're, 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 as their diagram there, I believe it's two feet or so. Uh, and where they'd be looking for perhaps four feet. So uh, maybe we can do maybe we could do some re- reconfiguration even where we are um, to make the game more safe for the people who are there now. Something else to look at. Okay. Anything else from, on pickleball?
Yes. Yeah, and it's, and point of note, it's actually feet, not inches on this diagram. So you're looking at twelve feet, six feet, and twenty-four feet. If, if you're, if your designations are the divider, it isn't given a height. It's, the dimensions that are on here are the space in between the different parts. I don't think you gave us a height on the divider net.
We'll do that uh, before we, when we give our feedback. Thank you. All right. With that, looks like we have an agenda item for our next park and recreation meeting. All right. Next up, we have a budget to actual six-month review. Mrs. Schweitzer?
So the uh, board desired to have reviews on a quarterly basis. We had one in the first quarter. This is the second quarter. The reports that you have in your packets included uh, six months' worth of income and expenditures. Just going over some high points within the budget. Uh, the interest income will be exceeding the budget projections on all funds. This is due to the aggressive investment plan and of course, the interest rates that we're currently experiencing. You'll notice too that the real estate tax is currently in a negative position. That is because a transfer was made to the capital reserve account. There wasn't an expenditure, simply a transfer. The real estate transfer taxes appear low because the county has not supplied us with the uh, May and June reports. They're slightly delayed because of the water damage to their building and, and software issues. So that'll come up at the next quarter. The building permit revenues and their corresponding expense need to be monitored. We realize that this is the first year of the third-party commercial inspector. So as incomes rise in that account, there's also a corresponding expense line item that also rises. And we'll get a better handle on that as we get more experience with the third party. Computer maintenance is generally higher across the board. This is due to the increase in IT services and software maintenance that we're experiencing. Engineering is currently low, but legal is high. This is due to the ongoing land planning issues that we're experiencing. Contracted snow removal with a line item is um, high this year. We had a couple of hits at the end of last year, beginning this past winter season. Hopefully we don't have a bad December and we should be fine for the budget year. The Public Works is experiencing higher numbers in vehicle maintenance. There's a few pieces of equipment that needed major unanticipated repairs. And again, with the trash vehicle maintenance, uh, likewise with that uh, uh, there was some unanticipated expenditures in our leaf equipment. You have a list of account balances as of June thirty. The, these are also listed in the agenda. The current all fund balance of all counts is fourteen million, three hundred and eighty-nine thousand.
Thank you. Excellent review. And uh, puts the township financially in pretty good shape. The only other thing I'd, I'd mentioned um, is, is that uh, we, it's not really a financial item, but we did discuss the fact that we'll be looking at a new uh, trash har, uh, contract um, beginning the first of next year and, and uh, administration and finances, we're working on that. All right. Any questions from the board?
No.
Anything from the audience? Okay. All right. With that, we can move to the Steiman Quarterly Report on the Blue Green Corridor. I don't see Mr. Schultz here. Doesn't, doesn't he usually give us that?
It depends what he's up to. Yeah.
I got, I got him. Okay.
Uh, so, so we typically get these quarterly reports from the Blue and Corridor, the Steiman Foundation Project. Uh, of particular note always is the uh, status of their funding currently. They have just shy of ten million dollars in uh, funding that has been committed. Not in hand, but given to them. Uh, they have just over three million in private uh, sources and their project costs right now are thirteen million dollars. They do have a couple pending um, applications, uh, one for two point six, five million. So they're continually looking at different sources of, of funding to get this project um, moving forward and keep it moving forward. They, like everybody else, has experienced the, the higher costs in doing construction work. The rest of the report really just goes over some of the details that they have, have been working on. Uh, probably more significant to the township is the work that we're working with them with the trailhead, which is planned for the Knoll Dorrit Park. So as we expand the Knoll Dorrit Park, it will also include a trailhead for the Blue Green Corridor, which will be something nice for our township residents.
Okay. Thank you. All right. Any questions from the board or from the audience? Okay, moving on to the Traffic Commission Report. We had a traffic meeting this evening at seven o'clock where we discussed Hayden Manor and the traffic control signage as we moved towards the dedication of the roads in that development. We got a traffic report from the chief where we continue to monitor approximately eight traffic locations for speed enforcement. We also have, did two, I believe there were new speed studies, I could be wrong about that, but certainly a new report on Raffo Township's South Colbrook Road speeds there as well as on Wild Lilac Road near the Hayden Manor development. From an old business standpoint, we have three items, Running Pump Road, Old Worstedown Road and Farmingdale Barcrest, where we're waiting to hear from our traffic engineer. There was no new business, there was no public comment and the meeting adjourned at six-seventeen. Any questions? Moving on to the next agenda item, is going to put you in the hot seat.
Thank you, sir. It's my pleasure to be there too. God bless to everyone. I just come to present my issue between board here. It's got to do with snow, we'll start off with that.
Sir, may I ask you to hold the microphone up?
Yes, ma'am.
And could you please also just state your name and address one more time for the secretary for the minutes?
My name is Frank Fraser. I live at twenty-eight eighty-eight Spooky Nook Road, Mannheim, Pennsylvania, one-seven-five-four-five and this is my lovely wife, dear Ann. Now, my issue is the snow. I know you can't do nothing with that miniature, that used to be putting course I live next door to, which is now becoming a forest. But anyhow, the snow, they piled it up on the corner of Shank and Spooky Nook. People can't see how to get into the intersection without risking serious damage to themselves. I've been there twenty years, it hasn't gotten any better, but maybe it's got a lot to do with me. So I'm bringing it to the board here and see what we can do with it because this is my third bout with cancer and I don't intend to be trying to deal with this. They didn't put a ramp up on my house as it is. I'd just like to see somebody, although you do, that, that bridge that goes to the auction road there, the trucks don't pay it no mind. I don't know what you can do for that, but you can probably tell them and push that right over across the street to the sports thing. Ain't nobody got to make no turns there, they just, that's blocking, you know, that's, that's it, man, to be off the corners and people can, because you know that's a very hazardous road, very hazardous. I don't want it to see, become a fatal, fatalities involved in it. So if you would, please look into it or send me a letter and I'll go submit my thing to the DOG or whoever it is that you have to do.
You're, you're speaking up at the right place at the right time.
Thank you, sir.
Before we head into winter, you know, and we'll, and we have our Public Works Director on the line here, he's heard your comments. And in a nutshell, you're asking us to do a better job in moving the snow out of, away from the corner of your property.
Yes, sir, because it comes up so high, you can't get into Spooky Nook Road coming from Shank, okay? It's impossible.
Okay.
When you pile it up so high.
All right.
Oh, well, that's another issue I think. I don't know, they, they come in, they're going to do this, they're going to do that where the miniature little golf putting course used to be.
Right.
I, I at one time used to get there and mow it myself up to a certain pole, you know? I would do it myself just to, you know, keep it looking like it should, but not, nobody, I spoke to the gentleman that comes and does the landscaping or whatever it's, they're supposed to do there. And he told me, hey, don't worry, he told me, don't do, don't worry about it, man, you know, they're going to tear it down pretty soon anyhow, you know, they're going to do some building, well, some building ain't helping nothing because getting on, I try to keep it, and almost seventy-seven years old with my health conditions, I try to do the best I can do.
Well, we appreciate that, we, we hear you on the second issue too. That's, that's something that at times, given the situation, we certainly can help you with that, okay? Just give us a chance, keep us in the loop, keep the township in the loop that we're doing the job that you want done.
Yes, sir, God bless, at least, you know, I know you're going to make an attempt anyhow. I don't know, you know, if you're going to do the job I want you to do. But you know.
He's up there, he's listening to you. Perry's up there listening.
God bless my brother, you hear me up there? Well, gentlemen, now that I've made my case, I feel so much better to come here and let you know how I feel and I do believe I'm going to get some reaction here.
Any questions from the board?
I need a suggestion, maybe Perry could look at talking to Nook Sports about snow deposit area across the street.
Yep.
Sounds like that would be pretty easy to fix it.
Thank you. All right.
Thank you.
Have a good day, y'all.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Any additional public comment? Yeah, we do, okay.
Red Canar one oh nine Clover Circle, I don't know if it's come across anybody's agenda through the police department or township, the pest control people that have been kind of coming through the township, I don't know if you're aware of this happening. If you go to the Nextdoor app and you type in Echo Shield, there's people coming like door-to-door, younger kids, they've probably been promised stuff. It just seems though, the, the way they handle it, people find people in their garage, they find them in their backyard, they come back repeatedly and they kind of like harass the people. Just go to Nextdoor app and type in Echo Shield and you'll get a lot of the feedback. So I don't know what the solution is, I mean, if somebody's in my backyard, I'm not going to call the police and you can tell them to go away three times, but I personally have no solicitation signs outside. Everybody doesn't ring my bell except those people and then I tell them to go away. But if you want to check that out, I mean, my neighbors have posted on Facebook, so I just thought I'd bring it to your attention that there's these groups and the response is always, in East Temfield Township, you don't need a permit to solicit so they can do what they want. So that's kind of what, the way they presented. So again, no big problems, I just wondered if that, that name pops up, it's just, I just see my neighbors and all the people out there complaining about it, so.
One specific company, right, right now?
Well, right now it's Echo Shield, yeah. And you know, there's, there's the other ones with the blue shirts and there's all these other ones that come through. I think they must like swarm, I think that Echo Shield is from like Norris Town or someplace. Like why wouldn't I use someplace local here? I'm not going to mention names because you might have a favorite, but I just figured I'd, I'd bring that up and see if, if it means anything or, you know, if you've heard anything, so. Thank you.
Thank you.
Yeah, that came to my house. So far.
Good evening, Mr. Chairman, Supervisors. My name is Victor DeSantis, I'm at twenty-five oh nine Brookside Drive here in East Temfield. I come to you tonight bearing gifts and with a decidedly recreational theme, since that was a theme of the evening so far. I represent Penn Legacy Rec Soccer. We are, we are proud to continue providing recreational soccer for boys and girls in the community since nineteen seventy-seven and for most of that time, we have been out here at Aheer Park, providing soccer opportunities for recreational players. We, we currently still use Aheer Park for our, we use roughly three fields-ish on your, on your front doorstep. We are so proud to be able to continue providing recreational soccer opportunities and we wanted to show our appreciation as always, as we have for many years, by providing a donation this evening to you in the amount of fifteen hundred dollars to, to show our appreciation for all the, all the weekends and evenings that, that you all let us use the, the park here and keep it up in such grand fashion. And so, thank you from all the players and families, Penn Legacy Rec Soccer, and keep up the great work with the park. And again, thank you for allowing us and I'd like to present this check to Stan.
Yeah. I'll take the money. So you know, I go back to nineteen seventy-seven when Penn Legacy is the current iteration of the soccer here in Hemfield.
Sure.
But back then it was Hemfield Soccer Club.
Absolutely.
And my kids were part of that from the beginning and their kids are playing soccer and they appreciate this very much.
Thank you. Actually, I, I thought about wearing my twenty-year-old Hemfield Soccer Club shirt this evening. I thought that wearing a patterned shirt might be a little untoward, so I decided to put on a newer shirt, so, but thank you, I appreciate that.
Yeah, I still have my Hemfield Soccer coach shirt too, so.
I got mine, I have mine as well.
No, it's.
Yeah, we could.
Thank you all so much.
Thank you, it's awesome. We don't usually get gifts, so this was extra special tonight.
Not only gifts, but gifts with a recreational theme, so you know, there you go.
It's been a good night, thank you.
Thank you.
Okay. Anything additional for public comment? All right, next up Managers Report, Mrs. Schweitzer.
So I was just told for Centerville Road South tonight that fifty-seven percent of the work is done and they are sixty-two percent of the original contract timeline. So all in all, pretty good time to, for their completion date in September of twenty-twenty-five. Church Street, there was concern raised, I think at the last meeting we had, Perry reached out to PennDOT and he has been working with them. We, they reached out to the Cooper Property, the Turkey Hill and Hemfield Beverage and he's also taken a look at the Ethiopian Church parking lot. So we were tasked to do it, we completed it and repairs are going to get made on three of those properties. Old Worstedown Road project has been on hold, that's going to start up again in July twenty-second and hopefully they'll stick to it and that should be out of the way in maybe two months. Farmingdale Road, I'm working on the grant reimbursement, that's a closed project at this point. Stony Battery Trail, the paving's complete, there's some minor work that still needs to be done regarding ADA mats, but all in all, it's, it's finished and ready to go. The zoning hearing board is going to be meeting tomorrow night for the Colbrook validity challenge, that's at seven PM. We're still waiting on the PennDOT permit for Route seventy-two and Lititz Road. Aheer Phase Two is, has begun, the pavilion to the east side of the park is under construction, should be done shortly and then they're going to be moving to the Bachi Court in August, followed by the parking lot in November. The Jecus Creek Equipment is scheduled to be shipped the twenty-fifth and that should be installed the first week in August. Noldorot Park, we are in the same position that we were in with the Aheer Phase Two, we are short funding for that project because of rising costs. So staff is looking at various funding options, so we continue to look at that. We are going to move forward and get a bid from Lowbar, which will give us an accurate price so that we can then therefore fine-tune our, our funding requests. The Harrisburg Pike and LGH traffic signal has been a problem and a thorn in a lot of people's side for several months. We have finally gotten action from PennDOT as soon as we did, CMI was out within days, made the repairs, so that intersection is now fully functional. We have a lot of paving going on, land and way is being paved, that's a fifteen-plus year project, it's finally getting its top coat. That is going to be a private drive, but the residents have been in place for quite some time, so that's a good thing for the residents. Same thing with Hampton Heath, which is formerly Stone Fence and Hayden Manor Phase Two, which we talked about at Traffic Commission, is working on their top coating, their paving. Perry says it's currently under, under, being done and I think Hampton Heath probably end of July. Regarding the stormwater projects, the only thing I want to mention is we did get the MPDS permit for the Nissley and Gloucester Basins. Those are the ones that we're receiving funding from West Temfield Township, so that's right in line with what needs to happen with that process. The Dorsetia Drive, I'm still waiting for one more property owner to sign off before that project can move forward. Regarding meets and meetings and groups, we had a public safety meeting, we already talked about, we had met, a meeting with Mike Brumoski, Brumoski, which is the superintendent of the schools and of course, we talked about the SRO program. We also had an admin finance meeting, which addressed the, the second SRO, the budget at six months, the trial balance and some other options regarding issuing checks. We also reviewed the capital reserve cash flow from through twenty-twenty-six and feel that we have sufficient funds to take care of the projects on the books, but that doesn't include projects that are kind of waiting in the wings that need to hap, happen as well. That concludes the report unless there is questions.
No questions here.
Just the big picture for the finance, for now twelve years in a row, we have a very well-funded capital reserve plan that we have been using for all these projects that we see and we are going into our future years, still well-funded, although we do have a couple of big fire purchases now, they're going to start eating into the capital reserve too, so, but we are looking a little bit better than what we were looking at the past year or two for capital reserve.
Absolutely.
Yeah. Question for the Dorsetia Drive stormwater pipe, the property owner is, is, do you foresee issues or is it like just somebody hasn't gotten around to it yet?
I'm not sure. I've reached out several times. I need to be a bit more forceful.
Is that the conservation district guy?
No, it's the landscaper.
Okay.
Okay. And it, I suspect it's not someone who was attending the meetings with us?
He has.
Oh, okay, so it is, okay.
It's unfortunate, but we need his signature.
Thank you.
But he hasn't approached you with any specific reason?
No.
Because, I mean, if there's something that needs to be addressed, we should.
And that's my thought as well, but.
Have a discussion, right?
There's just no contact and I'm not quite sure why. So I'll be a bit more forceful and maybe I'll have an answer for you by August.
There with that, anything more for the good of the cause tonight? With that, we'll adjourn this meeting at twelve-thirty, eight?
Mr. Chairman, just to note that we are going to have an executive session to talk about a legal matter.
Yes, executive session coming up.
Yep.
Again, we're adjourning at eight-thirty, eight oh eight. Read the clock.